All right, we call this meeting to order and start the roll call of council members to establish the forum. Um, yeah, here.
Here.
Trisha?
Here.
Vicki?
A sound?
Here.
Excellent. And Chelsea here. Okay. I'll bring you. I will go ahead and read this first. May the room be full. A love abide here, love of one another, love of our school. Set as many hands, build a house, so many hearts, building schools. Item 1.4, agenda modification. Hearing none, that takes us to 1.5, audience to address the council. Do we have any audience members who appear to address the charter council on items that are not on the agenda? Okay, so Nick is saying in the chat that you can barely hear me, so I'm wondering if that's the wrong.
It is the wrong one. Okay, let me see. Um. Try.
Well, it's definitely not now.
Okay, is that better?
Yeah.
Oh, excellent. Next one was funky. Should be a lot.
Speakers coming out of there and then this one is that and we don't want that. So I, this should be.
Ray, real audio. Are you sure?
Unless it's not popping up like it usually does. Maybe it's not popping up. Oops, sorry. I know, I have one back here.
There we go. Yeddy, Nana. Okay, it's popped up now. So that should be the one. Okay, another audio test. Is that better? Oh, excellent. Okay.
Something looked off to me.
Great.
I figured that out.
No, that is great. And then Alex, do you want to disable the chat so it comes just to you?
Yeah.
And then we'll go forward with, um. Okay, so that brings us back to audience to address the council. So are there any audience members here that would like to address the charter council on items that are not on the agenda? Okay, I am seeing none. Alex, do you have any? Okay. Um. So hearing and seeing none, that'll take us into the consent agenda. So when you are ready, or when anyone is ready, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll motion to approve the consent agenda.
Excellent. Thank you, Amber, for your motion. Do we have a second?
This is Trisha, all second.
Right, thank you, Trisha. I will call for the vote. Vicki?
Vicki, want to call I?
Trisha?
Hi.
Amber?
Hi.
Leanna?
Hi.
Chelsea?
Hi.
All right, consent agenda. Passed unanimously. So that takes us into section three. We'll start with 3.1, the finance committee report, Amber.
Um, okay, so. The biggest thing we discussed, uh, per the usual in the finance meeting is, um, our ADA being down. Um, I think Susan stopped me if I missed anything on this, but we're like 244. So. Um, that's concerning, um, considering what we're budgeted for. We, we don't think, uh, that we're going to have a huge difference in that. Um, so we're looking at, I think I jotted down like operating at $371,000 loss. Um, so it's more of a concern for 2022, 2023. And so we've already kind of started having those conversations and what we're going to do. Um. And then also, we talked about, um, the sustainable school model. We, we went into that a lot and kind of had a little mini meeting about that since I, I found out that that's what the finance committee is as well. I might have already knew that, but.
Oh, yeah.
So I was like, oh, okay. So we, we kicked around having a separate meeting for that as well. So, um. And then we talked a lot about the preschool program. Um, so I'm sure, I don't want to ruin too much on that. And we're going to probably talk about that some more in this meeting. Um, but the main thing was, I think we forecasted it at 273 for ADA and where our attendance was 244. And. And obviously, we're all pretty, uh, first on why that's happening. Um, and so we really just need to be aware of that for next year. We'll probably have to start having conversations for the next like 30 days, like, do we need to cut? You know, for next budget, um, and what are we going to do to try to get our enrollment up and attendance up? And then I think Susan was also saying that there was maybe something on the ballot or something that was being kicked around about the way, um, they were going to fund schools. I apologize, I don't remember the specifics about that. Um.
Yes, Alex, if you can share my executive director's report, I can show, uh, the full board what we, yeah, what we covered, some of the issues that we covered there. So, um, if you want to go ahead and finish, um, then I'll talk through some of the initial information we discussed in the finance with more detail.
Yeah, and I was going to go into some of those things where there were some new, um, uh, we talked about a lot of the new funding is really specific to certain programs. So that is a little bit different than it, it was recently, but also the way it was in the past. So how we're going to, and, and if some of those funds are going to be available to us as a charter school, and if they're even going to, if they are available to us, will they work within our programs? So I'll let Susan, you elaborate on those things more, but that's kind of the Cliff Notes version.
Yeah, as, uh, um, we're saying, there is a, a movement with Newsom in the current legislature to go away from the LCAP, LCFF funding, which is here's your money, how to spend it under these priorities, to really specific pots of money, which is called categoricals. And so, and then asking us to point that money in specific directions. Um, you know, for example, I think it was, as we talked about last time, where they had 10 items we could spend the money on, and we're really specific about which ones we would spend it on. Um, so that makes things more difficult. I think that, um, I received an email a couple of weeks ago, thanks Jim for helping us out, but there are like seven reports due this month by the 14th of the month. That's seven reports that I didn't have to do last year. So, you know, they're really being, um, specific about how they're doing it. Um, but on the other hand, there are some really good, um, programs and monies continuing to come out. One of the items that was told us that we're, that the state is looking about 20,000 um, per student as opposed to about 12,000 that I've read before. So that's a significant increase. Hopefully, most of that will come to schools. Um, but they have a 5.3% cost of living, um, which we'll bring up again later when we talk about the, um, lease. But, um, one of the meetings I was in, I was, we're all excited about a 5.33% cost of living increase, but then, um, reminded that we're showing a 7% inflation rate. So, um, it's a nice little pot, but it's not necessarily going to cover inflation. So, um, a number of other things, expanded learning opportunities program, um, that could be part of our preschool program, increasing our after school for, um, for middle school, uh, those sorts of things are looking for those increased hours and days in that. Um, childcare, it could also affect our preschool and TK planning. Um, and then music and arts programs are exciting for us, of course, and so on. Um, the other things that, um, I wanted you to be aware of is that, um, they're looking at a whole harmless year. Um, charters are not, a couple of years, I guess, charters are not currently engaged in that, so we're working on that. Um, we are not, we don't have the same funding structure as districts, so we're hoping that that will go through, but that's going to make, take some work. And then, um, they are, I'm hearing this from many sources, there is a real interest in going away from ADA, um, which is attendance based to enrollment based. So we would be funded based on the number of students we have, rather than how often they are in class, which would be, um, positive, uh, for, for all schools as a whole for that consistency. So those are some of the state level things I wanted to make sure you were aware of.
That would be really nice if they would do that, considering we have to staff based on enrollment levels, not based on attendance levels.
Right.
Yeah, it would be really, really nice to get funding. Um, and then I had a question. I think this is probably more for Jim, if you are there, Jim. Um, in the finance webinar, the B, that BCOE put on this morning, um, they had put out that, and I asked the question, but I didn't get a response, but that districts now have, or will have the option to use current year or prior year, which they've had, or a three-year average to utilize whatever the highest amount is. So, for example, 2023 would be, um, an average of the 1920, 2021, and 21, 22 school years. Jim, do you know if that will apply to charter schools, or is that one of the things that's still, um, only districts?
So that, my, my understanding is that's still just a proposal?
Right. But I don't know if the proposal included charters, or if it was only a proposal for districts at this point.
Not, not charters yet, but, but I think, I think Susan mentioned that there is, um, there is the most movement we've seen um, towards how to address that for charter. So they're already saying this needs to be addressed, but charters aren't specifically included in that. So it's kind of to be seen what that would mean. Um, there is a little concern though, too. And this, I don't want to complain about a gift, but it's, it's like we're, we might approach the three-year average, right, we're having a really bad year included in our average. So keeping that in mind, too, from a pessimist's perspective.
Yes, that's, that is true. But I suppose, though, a three-year average with one bad year is still better than only being able to use that one bad year.
Absolutely.
Kind of, that's that rough. Okay, thanks, Jim. And that's, I had a feeling that it was still in that stage, but I'm thankful that there's so much charter advocacy going on that hopefully, hopefully, some of those funding challenges can be alleviated. Sorry, Susan, if I interrupted. Did you have anything else?
No, that's all for now. Alex, you can take my report back down and save it for later. Thank you.
Great. Okay, so thank you for that, Amber. Um, that takes us to, unless, does anybody else have questions or comments on that? Vicki? Um, and, okay, then that takes us to 3.2, the parent council report. Trisha?
Yeah, so, um, they had their meeting and so they talked about the pop-up that they did before the holidays, um, out in the parking lot. And that went well, but it was kind of a last minute thing. Uh, and it was colder, so that brought up, right, you know, new events inside and all of that, and that would be nice. So, uh, was kind of the comments on that. Same thing going for like the dances, right, outside, colder, being able to do things inside. Start talking about the maid there, uh, the date for the house, and the subcommittee. Or, you know, they, their committee to try to help organize and put that together. Um, looks like they're working on doing a more traditional make there, not the drive-through like we did last year. And so, that's excited, exciting. And there was a lot of talk about, um, the, like, parent council funds and the money that they raised and what they could do with those funds to maybe directly give back to some classroom. Uh, a lot of talk about providing supplies that are like the wobble chairs or different things like that that are pricey, that would really maybe help certain students because it was class, and if you gave a classroom each certain amount, like all the classrooms in this time right now, our budgets are tight, how much impact would that be? You know, how, how helpful would that be to classes? So, um, it was kind of thrown back to maybe look into it more. Do all of the classes mean something like that? Would that be helpful as more classes that we should concentrate on? So instead of just throwing a little bit of money in each class, would a larger amount of money help? So it was nice to hear, you know, that they're thinking about those things and, um, it's more like triggering the equity gaps. And, uh, they're working on kind of a budget of the things like walnuts and mandarins and those things that like every year they're asking parents, um, here, our council help, maybe provide those things. So, um, much that we know those things every year. So they were working, the teachers were working on, teachers are, what that cost would be for the year, like, you know, maybe it's the supplies for the light, the light spiral or whatever it is, like the candles, it's those little things that don't add up to a lot, but it does put a lot of extra things that usually our teachers are just waiting for on their own, just so they are not asking the parents. So. So they were really trying to look at the parent council funds and how the.
Great. Thanks, Trisha. Does anybody have any questions for Trisha on the parent council? None. And that takes us into item 3.3. Um, and we'll start with 3.3.1, the general complaint policy. And you remember, this was brought forth for the first reading, um, last meeting, and these are policies that were drafted. Each of these three policies that we're looking at today were, were drafted with, um, by our attorneys at Young Money and Court. And it's to help to ensure and bring us up to some of the newer, um, compliance pieces that require us to have several, several, separate complaint policies for different types of items. So, um, this is to, to bring us up to the newer, the newest standards. And like I said, these were drafted directly from um, our attorneys based on the required language. So we will be, um, hopefully passing these today, certainly entertaining motions. Um.
This is, this is Trisha. I'll make a motion to approve the general complaint policy.
Hi.
I'll second that. Charles, Vicki?
Okay, so we've got Trisha with a motion and Vicki with a second. Um, really quickly, though, before we get into the vote or further um, council discussion, I did want to ensure that our, um, audience has an opportunity to address the council with any questions if they have them on this item. Okay, seeing and hearing none, then we will continue on with the vote. Leanna?
Hi.
Amber?
Hi.
Trisha?
Hi.
Chelsea, I, and Vicki?
I.
Great. And that passes unanimously, and that takes us to item 3.3.2, which is the Title IX harassment, discrimination, intimidation, and bullying policy. And, and like I said with the previous one, the same thing, this is to split out, um, the complaints from one complaint form to very specific complaint forms to be in line with the new, the newest regulations. And so again, let me go to our audience members. It's like, um, are there any comments or questions from the audience on this item? All right, seeing and hearing none. I'll go to the council. Are there any comments or questions from the charter council on this item? Seeing and hearing none. Um, I will, and there's nothing coming in the chat, correct, Alex? Okay, just want to make sure we don't miss anybody. All right, then I will entertain a motion when somebody is ready.
I'll make the motion to approve the Title IX harassment, discrimination, intimidation, and bully policy.
Thank you, Leanna, for your motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Vicki, for your second. I will then call for the vote. Vicki?
I.
Trisha?
Hi.
Amber?
Hi.
Leanna?
Hi.
Chelsea, I. All right, that also passes unanimously. So that takes us to item 3.3.3, which is the, um, the uniform complaint policy and procedures. Um, do I have any questions or comments from the audience on this item? Seeing and hearing none. Do you have any questions or comments from the charter council on this item? Seeing and hearing none, I will entertain a motion when you are ready.
I will motion to approve the uniform complaint policy and procedures.
Excellent. Thank you, Amber, for your motion. Do I have a second? Trisha, all second. All right, I've got Amber with the motion and Trisha with the second. I'll call for the vote. Vicki?
I.
Chelsea, I. Trisha?
I.
Amber?
I.
Leanna?
I.
Right, another unanimous vote. That takes us to item 3.4, um, which is the equity and, equity and inclusion task force report.
Susan? Hey, hi, yes. So our, um, task force met on, um, Monday, um, and let me share a couple of things that are going on. We did, um, we do have Lindsay Clipfild coming back this month, on the 27th, to do, um, the next phase of, um, professional development with the teachers. They're working again on the identity iceberg, um, for students as well as staff. And they do have, she did have a, um, Ted Talk that she suggested to the teachers. It's called, let's see if I, I'm sorry, I don't have it pulled up. Um, it is on the dangers of having a single story. Um, and it has been there for a while, and many people have probably already, um, heard it, but it is, um, what she is basing some of the work on. So, um, that might be something anyone interested in that would like to, uh, listen to and work with. Aside from that, we, um, talked about, uh, the Black History Month, how we want to honor that this month or next month, and, um, what sort of assemblies we might, might want to start having around um, the variety of, uh, of different cultures and so forth, much like the work that we did, um, Claire did for the Indigenous Peoples' Day, I, uh, back in November, um, or October. We, and, um, aside from that, we, we had a community conversation, um, went very well in December, but was not highly, um, attended. So we talked about what we might do to increase the interest in attendance. We have a high percentage of our families and staff that are very interested in, in the subject and, and things that to, to work on, but not attending the community conversation. So how we might be able to increase that. And, uh, get my notes real quick. Of course, I've lost my notes. Okay. Yeah. Um, so yeah, so a lot of good things going on in that area. I'm really excited to see Lindsay's, uh, work with faculty this year.
All right.
That's my report. You're welcome.
Thank you, Susan. Um, does the audience have any questions or comments on this line item? Seeing none, council, any questions or comments on this item? Well, thank you for the continued work on this. That takes us then to item 3.5, the COVID-19 response.
So, a lot going on with COVID-19, um, right now. We did get new direction, um, last week on, um, the amount of time that teachers and students need to isolate. Um, it's down to five days if they test negative at the end of that time and are asymptomatic. So, uh, so that is a change that we're working on putting out. We also received, uh, Friday, I believe, we received the, um, quick response tests for us to be able to use with, uh, teachers and staff and students to help make sure that second test is able to happen. So, um, we're working on making those available. We do still have our Tuesday morning PCR tests available to the students, staff, and parents. Um, we have had, as I'm sure you'll not be surprised, an increase in occurrences on campus. I wasn't able to get the full count of students, but I believe we've had four staff members, and we have had to put three classes into that modified quarantine. The modified quarantine process is now established, well, it's what we're, we have used, um, all along, but it's also now established as the recommended process, rather than trying to figure out individual students who may or may not be, um, affected. So I think that is an, an attempt to reduce, um, the burden of that one-to-one sort of process, um, for schools and others. It's never been effective for us to do a one-to-one because of the way our classes work together so often. So we have always done the class-wide, um, process. So that is it. It is still very much a, um, evolving situation. Um, we are told that the expectation is that our spike will be over by the end of January. So things, um, bigger events and so forth are still planned for, um, for March, for example. Um, they are not being canceled at this point, so. Let's go in.
I don't know if everyone knows, you can get free COVID tests now. You can go on covidtest.org and you just, it's super easy. I just tried it out today. You put in your name, your email address, your address, and they, um, I got like an email confirmation right away, and they're like sending me four tests. So you have home tests, you can get them for free.
That's every, every family.
Every family, yeah.
One, you automatically get four tests regardless of your family size.
So I don't know if maybe we can put that information out, um, because I had a little stockpile of those, not really knowing that there was going to be a test shortage. And it worked out to be nice in our favor at our home, since we had people getting sick, and that was nice to have that available. Um, so yeah, I did it today and it was really simple. So be nice to let, um, parents know, because I found out about it through a coworker, so.
We can do that. I know it just opened, it was supposed to open tomorrow and they opened it today, and I know 700,000 people went to the website today, so.
But, I mean.
And amazingly, it didn't, like, crash.
Yeah.
Shut down, because I was one of those people and. Shut down. Because I was one of those people and it did not crash.
Yeah, and I.
Shocking.
Exactly. And you got, I got the confirmation like right after I sent it. Now, I don't know if I'll get the test quickly, but
Right.
At least the process has started.
July before you get your test, but at least you ordered them.
But it's from Walmart. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, but it was, it's nice that it's an option and letting parents know, because I know there can be a lot of anxiety around trying to get tested, especially if you have multiple children and they're sick and you're sick.
Susan, I had a question for a clarification on what you said. And so you had mentioned if a student has COVID and then they test negative returning to school. If a student has recovered, but they continue to test positive, are they able to return to school?
They're able to return to school after the, the ten-day period.
Okay.
That was previously established. What they're, what they're telling us is that, that positive can show up for up to ninety days.
Right.
So, yeah, it's just that they can't come back in a shorter period of time.
Can't come back early.
Thank you.
That's good. Okay. All right.
We just closed the loop on the question. Yeah, on the whole.
Excellent. And do we have any other clarifying questions from the charter council members before we go to?
I was wondering, this new batch of, this new batch of tests that you're getting, and Susan, are those going to be available only on Tuesday mornings, or are you going to have another day?
Those are available any morning. They would just need to check it with the front office for Kayla. She's the the health aide is in control.
Get people back.
Thank you.
That's great. Thank you for that, Susan. All right.
A couple of questions.
Yeah, I was just going to say, let me just make sure that there's nothing else from the charter council, and then we'll go to the, the audience next. So thank hearing none. I've got Jackie and then Nick after.
Okay, so I just want one more time, explain to me the protocols on a child testing positive versus testing negative and having to quarantine. And then, yeah, if you can just explain that to me, because I am super confused. And my family has been at home for a week and a half, and I keep getting different answers from Blue Oak. And then I keep getting different answers from Chico Unified, which my older student is a part of Chico Unified. So clarification one more time, and then I probably have another follow-up question.
Okay, so when we have called for a modified quarantine, that means that the family has the choice of sending their child to school and testing them twice during that period. And that's a ten-day period. It's now been reduced. If there are no symptoms, it's been reduced to that five-day period. And more information on that will go out in the next day or so. Rachel and I have been just working on the composition of that. The other option is to keep the child at home and have them do the independent study home program at home. So it's either at school with testing or at home, no test necessary. We have no established rules according, as, as to whether or not the children are vaccinated. At this point, we may in the future, but that has not been proposed, that there is any kind of requirement or expectation that we are tracking who is vaccinated and who is not from a student standpoint.
So basically, if my child tested negative, then the whole, her having to stay out of school for twenty days no longer exists. That's what I was originally told last week. And then so if she tested positive and within five days again tests and it's negative, she's allowed to come back to class, correct?
That is my understanding. Rachel, is that your understanding?
Okay, and so and Kayla is totally caught up on all of this, because she is the one that was telling me differently, and this was last Thursday. And Rachel, that's why I was playing one tag with you all day Thursday, last Thursday about that.
Jackie, I will work with Kayla and send you a verification email tomorrow.
Okay. And then one other question. One other question that I have, and it may have happened. I won't know until I get test results returned again to me tomorrow evening. Hopefully, they'll come back that quick. But I have a feeling that my children's tests were accidentally switched. And one of them came up negative and one of them came up positive. If something like that is suspicious in these tests that was given through lab queue or whatever it is, oh, what do I do about that? Because my child is still having to stay home and do this independent study and being very frustrated. Even if she.
I think that, I think the best thing I can suggest for you right now, Jackie, is that you get one of the quicker turnaround tests. Take it in the day and figure that out that way. I mean, off the top of my head, that's the best suggestion I have. But I will also check with the health aide and so forth tomorrow.
So you did receive these tests from Chico Unified, because I did try to take Sierra down to the district office. They refused to give her the test because Blue Oak is not part of Chico Unified supposedly. So if I bring her in in the morning, you will let me go ahead and have one of those tests that you were given by Chico Unified on Friday to test Sierra.
Yes, and just to clarify, we got them from Butte County Office of Education.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I will bring her down then to be tested tomorrow with one of those tests.
Okay, great.
Okay. Thank you for answering those questions, Susan. Nick?
Yeah, I just, I, and I should probably already know this, but Susan, when a teacher is out for COVID testing, does that come from their sick leave? Or I know in the, for a long time, there was like separate COVID thing. Is there still COVID leave, or where, where does that come from when a teacher has to be out?
There is no longer COVID leave that ended in January of last year with the state making that change.
So then when a teacher has to be out, it's coming from their personal sick leave?
Yes, at this point it is.
Okay. All right, thank you for that, Susan. Charter council members, does anybody have any last questions, comments? Okay. Hearing and seeing none, that will take us to item three point six, the S R three approval letter. And this is just, my understanding, Susan, is this is just the Butte County Office of Education confirming that they received and approved our plan.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. That's great news. Does anybody have any questions or comments on this approval? And Susan, I presume that you don't need us to approve the approval.
No, you just need to officially be notified and you captain.
That is great. Thank you, Susan. What a world we live in, that we have to approve the approval for approval. All right. So then that's great news, and we'll go right into item three point seven, the corrective action plan.
Yes. So in this one, you will need to approve. This actually goes back to two thousand eighteen nineteen when we utilized state funds to have our building cleaned after the fire. And we, in, in the rush of paperwork somehow, do not have a signed contract with our service provider who did the building cleaning. They did the cleaning. We have the invoice. We have the proposal, but we don't have that actually signed contract, which is a requirement. So working with Daniel Stone at the state, he worked with me to develop this corrective action plan, which is basically saying that we reviewed it with the admin staff and always in the future, we will get a contract. So that's what it's saying, and I need your approval for it.
All right. Thankfully, they didn't say, too bad you don't have that payback. So that's, that's good. At least there's some leeway for a corrective action plan. Because.
Yes, and I will say that they were very helpful and good to work with. And I've sent this corrective action plan to them, and they've approved, they've said, yes, it meets the need. And I think there was one change they wanted us to say that as of January eighteenth, we would have done this. So I think, yeah.
Well, great. Thank you for that. Charter council, does anybody have any questions or comments? Okay, then I will entertain a motion when you're ready.
We'll make the motion to approve the correction, corrective action plan.
Thank you, Leanna, for the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, thank you, Amber, for the second.
Chelsea?
Yes?
I would like to ask for the edit that would, under the action plan, state that as of January eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two, the Blue Oak Charter Council and so on.
Okay, so may I be, do you accept that?
I accept that amendment with my.
Yeah. Okay, and then Amber?
Me as well.
Accept?
Yes.
Great. And then, did you get that, Alex?
Okay.
Perfect. Then that motion has been amended and accepted. And I will call for the vote. Thank you for that, Susan. There are no other questions. Vicki? Vicki was sound?
Aye.
Trisha? Amber?
Aye.
Leanna?
Aye.
Sorry. Chelsea, aye. Great, another unanimous vote. That takes us then into item three point eight, the Sustainable School Preschool Program.
Okay, this is part of our discussion from the finance committee and the work on, and the work generally on sustainable schools. So as began, I began working on the preschool planning, I realized I was looking at the same kind of process that I would need to do for the schools, sustainable schools as a whole for the finance committee. So this is the kind of numbers and so forth that I'll be running for the full school as well. So thinking in those terms. Reviewed our current user, our seven percent is our, is based on two hundred and ninety. So what are the costs based on that? With the cost per day are, and so on. I want to bring a point to the daily costs. Will run about between sixty-three and eighty-five dollars a day. That is to cover full costs if we want to charge them for everything. So the class for everything and treated as equal. We've compared to other local preschool costs or what they charge in general, we would be a little, we would be a bit higher than that. The difference between eight forty and eleven thirty-three is the difference between using one of our credential teachers as the teacher in the classroom. Where, or eight forty an hour is more using someone who is specific to preschool level training and is trained specifically for that. So that's the difference there. I've showed the current reimbursement rates that we have from the state. I will tell you a couple of things I did. Since my meeting with the finance committee, I was able to connect with the regional representative of the state preschool program. There is currently, they currently do not have an RFP, a request for proposal process out. They expect they'll have, that that will happen by summer. The state preschool funding is different based on where you are. So they get, San Francisco gets more money than Chico, for example. So she couldn't tell me a number of how much would be the reimbursement rate. So these rates are a couple of years old, actually, at this point. But but it is also a competitive grant. She suggested, for example, that if we did a full-day program, we would be more likely to get the funding, because that's what they're looking for. A full-day program is, would mean it would be basically seven thirty to five thirty. That's a full day from the preschool funding, state school funding process. So you know, that means this is, we're really running this as a full-day, all-day program and staffing. So again, this is, as we're still in a place of collecting data to go forward with this, to, to ask you to support this and approve this process, if we're ready to do that. The other thing is, we, we are continuing to receive feedback from our preschool survey that we've done. More students interested, I think we're up to nine that would be interested for next year. We're balancing our numbers on more like eighteen students. So that's one thing we would need to get more students to be able to make this balance. Or we would need to keep it under ten. There's a ten to one adult to student ratio in preschool. So those are the two options for next year as we move forward. So that's my information. Chelsea, if there are any questions?
Thank you for that, Susan. I don't have any questions at this time. Do you need us to vote on this today? Are we still waiting for the additional data for like the reimbursement rates and stuff?
I, if we wait until we get that, it will be too late for enrollment, I think, because we may not get that until July. And so we sort of need to make a decision whether we actually want to offer this for next year or not. I wasn't really asking for that approval this time. I just wanted to share this information and get any feedback before I write up a proposal.
Gotcha, gotcha. So you're looking for some direction from us. Great. I did in the, the finance webinar that I attended this morning, B C O E. And one of the things that they said was in the proposal, and I don't know if that's for this coming year. I didn't catch that. They were going through the facts, but that one of the, the things that there will be additional funding, well, that the TK program to serve all four-year-olds by twenty-five to six is in the plan. But then as part of that, additional funding will be available to add additional certificated or classified for each TK class that's available. So hopefully, hopefully that gets passed and we could get a piece of that pie to help with the cost. Did you have something, Leanna?
I was just gonna ask, Susan, how we can, I think it's great and I want to support it. So I just want to know how can we, or how can, how can we support that, especially you know, talking about the ADA down and operating at a loss. This is, you know, an opportunity to capture not only new ADA, but future, if students can decide to continue enrollment at Blue Oak. So how can we best support you and TK coming to Blue Oak?
And any input you have on the numbers or ideas for the community would be helpful. I have been asked to reach out to the one preschool that's that is over in Chico Unified. I think you mentioned last time, Leanne. I haven't had a chance to reach out to them for their business plan yet. So I am happy to hear that you're interested in supporting it. Even though we don't have all the information, I do know that there's a lot of, that there is more money coming out. So I do feel like we'll likely see a change in things as that money comes forward. So, you know, thank you. And your, your questions and your input here are the, probably the most important thing I need right now.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Where are these little people gonna go? Do, do you have a spare room at the site now? Or is this another building or?
We have, we still have a, an additional classroom that used to be kindergarten that we could potentially use for this. I want to be careful in that because that would mean some changes for cards. So I don't want to commit specifically, but we do have a larger building than we're fully using right now. So I think that we would find room for that.
I just wanted to.
Another thought that I had was, we should let people who are employed at the university end low. We should hit those families hard with this information of a new preschool and getting into Waldorf from the beginning. It's, you know, for some people, it would be the really the right choice for their children. And they are, they're employed and they have money, so.
It does, it does help when you.
I mean, I think that's really good input to Vicki because I was, we talked about this a lot during the finance meeting. And the biggest thing was, you know, how, how much subsidy is there going to be? Because we're going to have some students that qualify for the subsidies and some students that don't. And then my main concern was it not being full day. So I see that Susan's done a lot of work, actually, since we even met, like a week, week ago. So in, in extent, in going into it being extended from 7:30 to 5:30, which we, we were talking about, you know, part of being a sustainable school is being able to support both a one-working house, parent household and a single or two-working parent household. And I think that's, we, we kind of fall a little short here at Blue Oak on that. And I, I went into some of those reasons. And I just wanted to make sure if we're doing this preschool program that we're keeping that in mind. So Susan did a lot of extra work on, and making sure that. And the cost even seems like it went down a little bit, Susan, from when we talked. I don't know if it did or if it, I wasn't feeling great that day. But it looks reasonable to me. And yeah, just kind of understanding what that target demographic is and if we were going to do full day. Because there was a lot of things sort of up in the air. And so now it sounds like it would be smarter to go full, for a full day. Looking into what the subsidies would look like for parents and then also making sure we could support all different types of lifestyles for parents as well. So yeah, I think those are great questions. And, you know, we'll probably continue to talk about that in finance and the sustainable school. Because the idea is to, and I think we were talking about three and four-year-olds, that that would be the better target for us.
Already trained.
Yeah, already trained to start with, and to start with small, like 18 students is great. And even if we started with maybe not, I think it was the difference between a non-accredited or accredited. We might start with non-accredited and have, or credentialed, excuse me, and have a mentoring program with one of maybe our credential teachers and move it into a different program as we did it. Like then later they would be credentialed, later we could add more students, later, you know, and start with something small. So we've been talking about it a lot. So all the input you guys can give is helpful. And I see that when we're giving the input, Susan's really adjusting to that too and coming back with more information. And I know Riley's helping out a lot with this as well. So it's exciting. I think it would really help with our, feeding into our kindergarten program too, which is really where we want to get them. It's right there in the beginning, so we can have them for eight years.
Yes, yeah. Well, eight years after kindergarten.
After, yeah.
Theoretically.
Yeah, yeah.
Twelve.
It should be great.
Plus potentially two years of preschool.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Get them, get them. Um, so some suggestions or thoughts that I have. So would first be, certainly I think you'll have an easier time filling a full-day program because there is such a need. I know a lot of people with kids that age that struggle to find adequate childcare outside of like a daycare babysitting type environment, something that's like better than that for that age group or more structured, I guess, is the word I'm looking for. And so, but it's again, a lot of working families. I think that's definitely, I think you'd have an easier time filling that. And so then my suggestion would be, if you have nine families interested, cap the program at 10 and begin a waitlist. And then if you get enough families on a waitlist to go to the next level and hire another staff, then hire the staff and accept whatever that number, if it's eight or another, you know, whatever that next number is, to then accept them when you have enough to support the staffing. So instead of like, keep going and hope we get to 18 and then we really only get 12, that then puts us operating in the deficit. But if we say, okay, 10 and then a waitlist, if we only get two on the waitlist, it's unfortunate, but that doesn't necessarily flesh out, you know, and deciding kind of what that, what that magic number is that, that adds another staff. The other thing that I would urge you to consider, when only having, I know the legal requirement is one to 10, but if we're going to have these children outside at all, then you have a pretty big problem when one kid has to come in and go to the bathroom and you have to take all 10 of your children inside so that you don't have a four-year-old unaccompanied in the building. And so just really taking that into consideration. Because although the requirement is one to 10, when you're dealing with a larger facility and some of those challenges. Fortunately, we do have the bathrooms in the kinder classrooms. So utilizing one of those, that's there, but you don't have somebody to come in with students from outdoors. And so even if you did a full-day program and only had two staff for part of that day and you structured your outdoor time around that, like even the middle section of the day that would include like lunch and outdoor time. And that might be a way to not have two full-time staff, but still have that additional support for at least part of the day. Yeah, those would be the biggest things that I would suggest. And then same thing ensuring, because like if you do in dealing with that age group too, and only having one staff, if somebody does have an accident, then you have that one staff member attempting to get a hold of a parent and, or call, you know, make that call home, help to get that child home or up to the office or whatever that protocol would be, having to tow nine other little ones along too. So just, just things to think about. And it may be the fact that, you know, we, in some of the administrative costs on this, it's having somebody available to come down to the classroom when things like that arise or something. So just, just some thoughts.
I don't want to go too far down the rabbit trail of like more smaller detailed questions, but I think just overall, wondering if the calendar will match Blue Oak's academic calendar. You know, well, is there a possibility of it being open during the summer? Or is it just completely in line with, you know, the K8?
Good question.
I'm writing that down.
Okay. And then obviously, I mean, I could throw out other ones too, but you know, coming in with, you know, who's collecting payment and like policies and that, those things will come down to more details. But that does become another position in that and all that.
There's a lot of work to be done for a program. Yeah, so that's an excellent question. So it's my understanding, years ago, I think predating all of us except maybe Nick, there was an after-school program that was run by the school. And that was one of the biggest challenges they faced was trying to run the building, or the building, the billing for that program. And that was, like I said, many, many years ago and many stages of the school ago. But I do know that that's tricky.
Yeah, and if there's going to be subsidies too, like that's going to, that gets tricky.
Making sure all the, whoever it is is dotting the i's and crossing the t's to get our funding because we know how much the government lets paperwork. No? All right, great. Well, I'm, I'm excited. And I think that this is a great opportunity to get in on this, especially because, like I was saying, the proposal or for, you know, what I heard this morning is it looks like they're really looking to have this fully implemented for the 25, 26 school year. So to get in early and be established and known as not a brand-new program by the time it becomes an everybody program, I think gives us a lot of benefit as well to, to be known, so.
I'm sad that my kids are all with kindergarten.
Definitely. Yeah, and there's going to be a lot of value in the preschool that we have here because of the structure that will be behind it and the fact that they'll be filtering into also our kinder program and so on. So we talked about that a lot too. That it's not going to just be any old preschool, going to be a Waldorf preschool. And that definitely makes a difference too, even if the cost is a little bit more, parents might be willing to pay that just because of what they're getting for that cost and really being able to sell that to, to the parent and helping them understand that it's, it's not just any preschool. Great, it's exciting.
Yeah.
Are there other, are there other Waldorf preschools that we can take information from? Or is that where you got most of this information?
Not with Chico, I think, but that's what she, right?
Yes. So yes, there are other Waldorf preschools. And it's some of the research that Riley has done and given me a couple of, of other programs that run the Waldorf preschools throughout the country, really, but not in Butte County.
Okay, thanks.
So Susan, do you feel like you have the direction that you need from this? Or do you need us to organize?
I do. I have some great additional questions. I appreciate. So we can move forward with some planning.
Excellent, excellent. Yes, this is big stuff. All right, speaking of big stuff, that takes us to item 3.9, the lease extension.
Yes, so as I shared with the Finance Committee, I was really grateful to get this because it's been about seven months since I actually initially requested it. So I was starting to get a little nervous. Thank you. When I told Deborah that, she jumped right on it and got this from them. They are requesting, I think we calculated, a 5% increase, which felt like a lot. But then, when I realized that we're having a 5.3% increase in COLA, which past contracts, they would have taken the 5.3 and they're not. So I have to consider some level of generosity on their part. So we're asking, this will, it will extend our lease through July 31st of 2023, which is when, from charity's information, we should have a new site ready to go. So.
Really?
That's the plan.
All right. That's exciting news.
Well, that's good. I know 2023 seems like so far away, but it's next year.
Just saying.
Yeah. All right. So you said we do have the COLA increase that covers this, so it doesn't really put us at a wash. Yeah, it's, at least we're not then digging into another.
It's a 0.3 gain.
Yeah, right? Which is good because we've got shortages elsewhere to use that 0.34. So, okay, well, are there any other questions or comments regarding this lease extension? Or the addendum to the original lease dated August 29th? Okay, hearing and seeing none from the council. Are there any from the community? Audience, I guess. Hearing and seeing none. That will, I will entertain a motion. It's ready. This is Tricia. I'll make a motion to approve the lease extension. Thank you, Tricia, for the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Vicki, for the second. All right. There are no last, last minute. Nothing? Okay, then I will call for the vote. Vicki?
Aye.
Amber?
Aye.
Tricia?
Aye.
Leanna?
Aye.
And Chelsea, aye. All right. That brings us to item 3.10, the School Accountability Report Card.
So School Accountability Report Card is required to be completed and posted online by February 1st. This is the current year, this is on last year, and so it's current, the current information. There is a lot of missing information in this report, so you'll see a lot of blanks. And that is related to the fact that the California Department of Education is where we need to get these numbers. I could go through and figure them out myself, but they want us to get our same information that's posted in other areas of the CDE website, and they have not provided them for us yet. So what I need is your approval on this. And then to, then just to acknowledge to you that you will be receiving an updated one when we get all of the information from CDE.
Great. Thank you, Susan. And just a reminder for the council members and information for the audience, CDC did put out guidance. CDE, sorry, not the CDC, the CDE did put out guidance and information that supports what Susan just said, that those blanks will, that information will be forthcoming. And we have been instructed to move forward without that information, so. Great. Does anybody have any questions or comments on the School Accountability Report Card? And from the council, any from the audience? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the School Accountability Report Card. I'll make the motion to approve the School Accountability Report Card. Thank you, Leanna, for the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Amber with the second. And I will call for the vote. Leanna?
Aye.
Amber?
Aye.
Tricia?
Aye.
Vicki? Vicki was sound?
Aye.
Thank you. Chelsea, aye. All right. All right, item four, faculty, 4.1, the grade level report. Riley and Nick?
Hello, I'm just getting up our previous parent council meeting slide deck that we have. So many windows. Okay, I think I have it. Maybe. Share screen. There we go. Okay. Some of you who already saw this, thanks for hanging in there while we show it to those who missed it. All right, in the Maple Rose Kindergarten with teacher Cheryl, there's Wintery themes, the first birthday of the year, and engaging in the art of lining up.
And adults, sister, can't do that.
Grade one with Miss Jennifer. There was a lantern walk among wild geese that settled to rest from their flights and listened to children sing. There was a parent evening, fold, they made folding window stars and painting, sorry, I'm having a hard time with this one, and painting their child holding a candle with a winter wish in their heart. sorry, I'm having a hard time with this one, and painting their child holding a candle with a winter wish in their heart. Very sweet. And the children got to open toys and visit the land of make believe every day as medicine from an early childhood without hands-on play with peers. And first and sixth grade buddy love, first grade put on a winter concert and then hosted a winter ball in their classroom for their buddies and recorded for families. They danced in their holiday finest with the loveliest manner together. We have a little video to share.
That's so sweet. Oh my goodness, I love it.
This was so sweet for parents that couldn't join to watch. She did so many pictures and videos.
That's wonderful.
I love it. Twirling. Oh, yeah. Oh, they had their big buddies there, too.
Of course.
Yeah.
Alright, I will pause us there, although it is very sweet. Oh. Apparently I can't pause it without clicking this. Okay. Grade two, in December, our class learned about people with golden hearts. These are people who rose above adversity and accomplished their dreams. One of the golden hearts we learned about was May Jemison, the first black woman to travel into space. We also worked on writing opinion pieces that were winter and holiday themed. One of the most popular writing prompts was that their favorite holiday was what their favorite holiday treat is and why. Grade three with Miss Maycheck, we are, we are excited to move into measurements for this block, looking at length, volume, and mass. Students will be learning how the concept of a foot came to be and will be measuring things around the class with their own foot. We will also be measuring out cups, pints, liters, gallons, as well as ounces and pounds. I'm sure we will all measure up to the task, pun intended. Grade four with Miss Lee. In December, students wrote their first essay. They researched their animal for two weeks, then spent the last week editing, revising, and typing their essays. Some added pictures and even made a Google slideshow. It was a successful endeavor. Grade five with Mrs. Hamlin and myself, we are jumping into learning states and capitals. This is a continuation on our study of North America. We started, type us, we started in with our learning about Central America, working our way up to Canada, and now we will spend some time looking at the states. Before our winter break, each fifth grader created a digital pamphlet enticing others to move to ancient Egypt. That was part of our writing focus and it was quite exciting to have them make a threefold digital pamphlet. But we did it. It was great. We continue to practice every day to prepare our minds and bodies for the pentathlon happening in May. And we are so thankful that Mr. Meyer can join us some mornings to help us practice that in addition to during his games time. We have some images of chalkboard drawings from grade six, ancient history and physical science. Grade eight platonic solids. And that is the end of our presentation.
The twirling was my favorite. It's hard to beat little twirlers.
I love the brochures. They're so darn cute.
Alright, well, thank you so much for that, Riley. Does anybody have any questions for Riley?
Thank you, Riley.
Yes, thank you.
My favorite part.
Alrighty, well, then that takes us into five point one. Susan?
Back to the executive director's report. If Alexie can roll down under to the next part. Okay, so there are a couple of issues that I wanted to bring up to have conversations about. And so I put this into my report and will bring it more as an action item or a specific agenda item next month so that it can be be out there more broadly. But the first one is school attendance. The whole state of California and probably the country are dealing with attendance issues right now with COVID. But Blue Oak historically has a very high chronic attendance rate, that is students who who attend less than eighty percent of the time. And this year, in an attempt to address that, we did engage our, have engaged our interns through the counseling program and so they are regularly calling families who are not attending and finding out if there's anything we can do. And we have done some really significant help for individual families, helping them with housing and transportation and other such things. But we still do continue to have a significant number of families that are very low in attendance, in the sixty percent rates, for example. And of course, attendance currently affects our finances, which is important, but it also more, even more importantly, affects our ability to teach the children their sense of comfort at school, their feeling of inclusiveness. And one of the options we do have is a charter school and one that I have never put into practice. And so wanted to bring it to you to discuss is that we can tell families who are not attending that they need to return to the district and send them back to the district with the hopes that the district has more support, such as transportation and so forth, for them. This is why, for example, some of the truancy information, the SAR process, which is a legal process, really doesn't apply well to charter. We don't have have a legal option of prosecuting parents, for example, because we are expected first instead to return them to the district. The other thing I wanted to say is attendance is also considered a climate issue. It's related to how welcoming our school is in general and how it's felt. So, so the work that we've done with, including the interns to improve that connection, to find out what our needs are, was a very important piece before we discuss anything around returning to the to the district. So I'm putting that out there for your your thoughts and ideas before I even move forward at all. This feels like a very big change for the school and I'm sure there are times when teach, and I know there are times when teachers and faculty feel like the need for us to remove students that are just not attending is critical, but there is also that desire to be welcoming and open to and helping them to figure out what they need.
That's a tough spot. Um, is there, um, an opportunity to have kind of a step in between there of like working with the families and as part of that process, maybe having like a covenant or whatever you'd want to call it, where they commit to increased attendance? And then if, you know, if their needs still aren't being met, and obviously word it in a way that's not like show up or get out kind of thing. Like, I don't want it to sound like that, but kind of that in between. Because, um, I know from like a psychology standpoint, if you sign an agreement, you are more likely to follow through with it. Like, there's there's research finding that from people who are way smarter than me. And and so maybe having that be part of that process, you know, obviously the first step just be that personal intervention with the interns and trying to find out, is it, is it a need issue and can we even fill that need or is it a a lack of, or a lack of recognition of the importance of of greater attendance? You know, it's like kind of finding out what the issue is. And then for those families, that it is just a, like, well, it was inconvenient and I don't think it's that big of a deal if my third grader misses a couple of days, um, maybe a family in a situation like that, um, where the barrier isn't, we have nowhere to live right now, so I don't have a way to get my child to school. Obviously, this wouldn't be for that family, but, um, that there could be some sort of contract or covenant and then the the following step would then be to return them to the district. Um, you know, when just a thought.
We, yeah, we do currently have a process and it leads to a SAR meeting. So there's actually three letters that go out. The first one is, hey, you need to come to school. The second one is an expectation from, the second and third both have expectations of meetings with me and a contract sign. My experience over the, since COVID, is that nobody shows up to my meetings because they're virtual. So, and we do, you know, schedule them when they say they're willing to come and all that. So we are really struggling with that internal piece right now. But the families that I'm thinking of for this are those that are so far down the road of, you know, a fifty percent attendance, for example, that it's really seriously hurting their child's education. Three days, even the six days, which is the expectation, if you that they get a letter. It's, you know, that's very recoverable, but when you're, you have a student that's that's gone for a couple of years and only attending, you know, two, uh, two weeks out of a four-week month, that's, those are the ones that I'm really concerned about and thinking of this for.
Well, and just at that point, if we don't have the ability to do anything legally or doing that child injustice right, and not sitting back to the district where maybe something can be done. Yeah, and I was just gonna kind of add a comment to this because I was, I was thinking about this since one of my classes was on modified quarantine, how challenging that can be for the teachers as well, because if you have students that are in different places, it it's going to affect the cohesiveness of the whole classroom. And then inevitably, I feel like that child's going to be left behind or the teacher's going to be pulling back on certain things. And so all around, students are going to be missing out. So it it does seem like something that we definitely, in my opinion, should move forward with with a very thoughtful plan, but, um, you know, it might help everyone as a whole, the teachers, the students that are there every day or most of the time and the student that's not, um, to get them in maybe a better situation. So it's maybe not a negative, um, it's maybe just that Blue Oak is not the right fit for them at this time, so maybe approaching it a little bit that way. But I I do see, because it it affects our funding too, so then we're also not providing what we need to provide to all the students. So the attendance, it unfortunately is kind of affecting a lot of things, the classroom, the student, the school. So I definitely think we should move forward with addressing this a little bit more aggressively. And maybe it just takes, the parent just doesn't want to let go to this school and they might just need that little nudge that it's not a good fit at this time for them. And it might, and it's going to open up a spot maybe for somebody that does, it is a better fit and does want to be here, you know, or can be here, not necessarily want to, but just can.
Yeah, I think I think there's a lot to unpackage in this. Yeah, and for those families who do have barriers to getting to school that we aren't able to to get through because of either what we have available to us or, you know, for whatever reason.
Yeah, we don't have funding for transportation.
I, you know, so that, um, we're, we're not, and Tricia, I think, said this too, we're not serving the students well by allowing them to continue, um, to get further and further behind. We can't meet those needs. And also I think that the reality is, is that charter schools are a privilege that I think is amazing, that is afforded to the students in this country now and really prevalent in our area. And I think, though, with that, you know, with privilege comes responsibility, right? But that, that, like Amber said, you know, that also opens up a spot to for somebody else that may not have otherwise been able to attend if if a student who's not attending is filling a seat in a whole class. Vicky?
So Susan, if you implemented this today, if you wanted to send students back to the district today, how many students would you send?
I have three in mind that are of a concern. If I went and actually went through the numbers, there might be more.
Right.
But there are three in mind that I've gone through the process and attempted to meet with the families and, you know, they've promised to return and haven't, that sort of, you know, oh, yes, I'll get them there and then they don't come and and so forth, so.
Are the students in in general, are the students enthusiastic about being at school? Or is it, is it a parental problem or are the students reluctant? I know the students have got to be reluctant because the more they miss, the more behind they get and then the less successful they are. And they don't want to be there if they don't feel successful.
The three students I'm thinking of in particular always express how much they enjoy being at school. So, um, that it is, you know, but we also know that as they continue to not attend, that factor become, will become an issue for them at some time in the near future.
And they really build on school. I just find it, it's got to be challenging for the teachers, too, because, you know, they're really building on things every day and if you miss, it just, I just can imagine, it's just like a kid that's behind, you know? It just, it just creates a really large challenge to where it almost removes the teacher being able to help that student at a point, too.
And Leanna, you had something?
Oh, it's okay. Um, I was just gonna say for those, you know, students who are on your lower end, you're below fifty percent, whether it is, you know, time to to speak to them and send them back to the district or it's a wake-up call for them if they do enjoy being here. But addressing the student who maybe has a dentist appointment, so the parent keeps them home for the entire day, that type of situation, I feel like if there's those type where we're losing ADA because of something as simple as that, and I didn't know coming into charter that funding was based on every single day of attendance. I'm just wondering if for your average student, if there is some education piece that can be shared with parents that's, you know, simple enough to say, uh, your child's attendance matters and just a small promotional, you know, of information to the parents of why it matters to come, even if you have a dentist appointment or an orthodontist and it's going to mess up your schedule, it's still, you're helping your school and, you know, almost like a campaign of your attendance matters. Um, I've worked in schools also where there are, you know, positive attendance type lotteries and everything from, you know, some type of fun role or privilege to some type of, you know, gift certificate, but you have to have the attendance in order to win the lottery. And if you're not there, it rolls over. And so there becomes some positive, I don't want to say peer pressure, but there's this positive feeling of, I want to be in school because I could get, you know, a Baskin Robbins or whatever it is and that keeps building. And it's like, oh, you know, Billy wasn't here last time, so now this time we're going in. And I've seen that done where it was like twenty-five dollars, but then, you know, three students missed it, so it's become seventy-five dollars. You know, it becomes, and it doesn't have to be money and it could be, you know, the person who gets to be, you know, the lead gardener in the student garden. It doesn't have to be, you know, a monetary thing, but something where, one, the parents understand the gravity of, if I keep my kid home for a day, it hurts the entire school. And also where the kids have the buy-in of, you know, some potential winning type of a situation where there's more education and positive attendance. And I'm talking for your, your upper half, not your, your bottom half, but where, why not help bring up the positive attenders? And address
Help with some of the ADA.
Yes, and then address your lower fifty percent in a separate kind of category.
Um, just kind of speaking as a, a parent that has
Um, just kind of speaking as a a parent that has four children here um and has lots of appointments and sick kiddos, I would say that Blue Oak is ve- very friendly to helping parents out. I mean, I had, we we had a lot of illness go through our house and I was able to like at a moment's notice say, can you put my kiddos on independent studies? And the office is amazing about that. They make it so easy to do it.
Even via email.
Even via email, like you, there's so little effort, you kind of have to put into it that I think in my opinion, what Susan's probably talking about is this is such a bigger issue. It's not because they
Sure, they do a lot of this.
They do a lot of those things and um and I'm sure I would totally help because there's still those ones that even here and there don't know, but I think these are probably the ones that it might not matter because Blue Oak does provide so many other options and they are so helpful and the the teachers are very engaging and they know the students, every single student and they and they, you know, they they make sure that they in a moment's notice can put ten kids on a um modified schedule. So I fear that these are probably students that are, it's not going to matter. They're not going to be able to make it for whatever that barrier is. I mean, like I said, we don't, we don't have funding for transportation. So, you know, they they don't have that sort of option and um I I just feel like the ones that are at the lower fifty percent, um, those kind of things are awesome, but I don't, I don't think they're gonna be.
No, and that was it.
Yeah, yeah, okay, that group, okay, for the upper group. But for the upper group, you know, for the ones that are just maybe missing the whole day and not half the day. I know I'll ask like what, how long do I have to be here so I can set my appointments later? So it's good to be knowledgeable about those things. And I know we know more just because we're in these meetings. Um, and there's some parents that don't know, but I feel like this year Blue Oak has done a really good job trying to get that information out and making sure parents have other options because it's it's been challenging and you want to keep your kid out a little bit longer when they're sick these days and and just have an extra care. So um, but like I said, it's so easy just to get that work and keep them caught up. But you have to be able to have the support at home too to do the work. So i- if it's a support issue with the parents, it's just going to be that it's going to be an issue regardless.
My comment would be if we're sending them back to the district with the, so transportation, the legal aspect of it, is there other support for this child as they're going back? Because my concern would be if this child's already in an environment and they're not coming to school. And then we're saying, hey, now you can no longer come to the one place you were enjoying coming. What, you know, what impact is that going to have on that child too? Yeah, so what other supports is the district going to have for them to get the show up more?
Good question.
I would say a big component is that legal component because I know throughout my time being here, I've heard um plenty of parents who don't place a high value on getting their kids to school. Make comments about like, oh, it's no big deal, you just get a letter, but they never do anything. Like, and this idea that those letters, you know, for some parents, like if I were to get that letter, he's freaking out.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, totally, I'm not following the rules.
Yeah, yeah.
And and for children like because you're, you know. But whereas with the district, there are those additional steps being taken. Um, and I think sometimes families look for other schools because they're, they can skate.
Yeah, yeah.
And go under the radar and not have to be accountable. Um, but I think that that accountability aspect is so powerful because I think more often than not um it is the the parents, not the children.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would agree.
And the child's the one that's gonna Right, and if they like it here and they're not able to like kick that for parents to bring them to school. They're, no matter how much they want to be here, like once it gets to that point, we're not doing them a disservice because even fifty percent of the time, they're going to be so far behind that we're really setting them up to to seriously fail in high school.
For sure.
And beyond. So Vicky, I think had something. Vicky?
Yeah, so Susan, do you have a procedure um in place or an idea of how you might um what steps you would take to approach these families with the idea that they need to go back to the district? Do, I mean, there's the three SARB letters and then beyond that.
So she, I haven't ever been here.
What do you?
Um, yeah. So we do have um a couple of processes already, but we've talked about this SARB process. Um, we also have a process that relates to students who are no-shows. So if a student, for example, turns in the application and enrolls in the school and then never shows up, um, the state gives us thirty days to say, sorry, you didn't show up, we're going to return you to the district. And the parents will go back and forth with us and say, oh, we're going to show, we're going to show and not show up. So there are are some legal and um procedural me- measures in place that I would take to put together to add this level of um of option into them. I, it's, you know, but it's, for me, it's a big one when they're coming occasionally still. It's very different from just sort of never coming to school. So that we currently have that process if somebody just stops showing up and doesn't transfer to another school, we have a process in place. Um, we just don't have it in this sort of on again, off again situation.
Yeah, would that be a new policy? We need a new policy.
I think we probably do, and that's why I'm bringing it forward um to you and then updating um the procedures um on a very, in a variety of levels. So um I wanted to get this kind of input before I went into the process of writing something new.
Susan, I have one last question, um and it might be too early in the process to have a a complete answer, but would this be um on a case by case basis in the sense that um like would it be this, you know, act- item A triggers then step B, which then triggers step C? Or would it be as you're working with families, making the determination, like maybe they go from fifty percent attendance to sixty percent attendance? So we're, they're clearly working on it, so we'll keep them and keep helping them increase that. Or um it does this have to be, you know, for um equity purposes, like all or nothing, if if these conditions are met, we have to follow follow our policy or is there leeway? Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. And um I feel like the the process we currently have set up and also the recommendations from CDE and so on are really about what are we doing to help the family first? And so it would be, you know, if they um start attending even, and I've done this with special education and other students before, it's like if they can just start attending three days a week instead of one, then we consider that an improvement and we reward that and also support it. Um, this would be for that family who uh just really can't even even when they want to, they just can't seem to make it and they really need a higher level of support. So, yes, that would be, uh definitely a discussion and working with the families would be the first priority.
I like that and I like that it's um that in putting something like this in place doesn't then tie your hands. It's like, well, you did this for too many days, so now you have to go. It's like, there's still that um that leeway of like really being able to work closely with the families. Because I know that's one of the benefits of a smaller school like ours is having those relationships in place and and being able to get to know family. So that's great.
Okay.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions or comments? Uh, Susan, would you like to go into the rest of your report?
I would like to do that. Okay, so the next one um is another discussion. This has been um in the discussion mode um for a number of years, maybe five years um of changing the way we loop our students. We currently loop first grade to eighth grade for all classes. And um a number of charter schools of the Waldorf Charter Schools are looking at changing that. Uh, part of it is because of the uh expectation of teachers um and how they change from first grade to eighth grade and the deeper need for curriculum um for deeper curriculum in the upper grades makes it the eighth grade, the eight year uh rotation difficult. Um, and so it was brought up to faculty. They have been surveyed and a hundred percent of them s- said, you know, they think this would be a good idea. So it's it's also a big issue for parents and I haven't really been able to have that conversation with parents so much yet. But um we would either do a four year or a five year loop, so the class would still stay together um from first to with the same teacher from say first to fourth grade and then another ta- teacher would take them the rest of the way through. So that's the way uh we're looking at that. And I want to, as I've said, this has been pretty thoroughly discussed at a faculty level. Uh, but I have brought it up, I brought it up maybe pre-COVID to parent council and they were just not ready to think about it. So um wanted to bring it up here also um and then move it forward and for next year, if this is a change, the community as a whole is going to support.
Great, great, yeah.
I think it's a great idea from the the professional teacher's point of view because it enhances the knowledge of our teachers and allows them to focus on a specific curriculum. And it's, it is deeper, it is thicker in the older grades. It's actually more fun too, but I mean, it was for me anyway. But it's important to n- know your stuff and I've often wondered how the teachers did it their first eight year rotation to start teaching and then teach a new grade every year is. That's a lot of work. It's a lot of learning. So um I think it's a great idea.
Teacher friend of mine decided to teach her class the ukulele one year and she didn't know how to play the ukulele before she decided to undertake this. And she said to me, she goes, I only have to be one lesson ahead of my students. And I feel like Vicky often, that's the position that our teachers are in on that first loop where they're they're having to learn the information along with the students, but just ahead of them. And and that's a lot, that's a lot to ask.
It is, it is.
To be a new teacher for eight years instead of, you know, maybe two years.
Yeah, and I
In a traditional
Yeah, and I I also feel like there's just some teachers that do the lower grades just really, really well and enjoy it more and they're just even though they can, they can do the upper grade, they just thrive in the lower or vice versa. They thrive in the middle school and they can teach lower grades, but it's just not really where they thrive. And and giving them those options, yeah, the, yeah, giving them those options. I I'm, I totally support. And we've kind of done it a little bit, right?
This year.
This year, right?
Jennifer and Brianna.
Yeah, Jennifer, Brianna, um that was one of their um this was one of the discussions in their choice to do that is that maybe we should try it first before we just changed it for um everyone. And so far, um they have both felt like this was been been a good choice for them, so.
Yeah. And it was kind of nice because then Jennifer also got to support that class when it needed to. And so she had the familiar familiarity with that class already. And so I just, um, yeah. I'm definitely for it, yeah. Do we think about maybe um sending a survey out to parents? Would that be like another stack or?
That's another poss- that's a possibility at this point, yeah.
Get feedback and
Get more feedback, yeah. I think, yeah. For some of them, parents that I've individually talked to, it's just such a surprising thought for them. They haven't really thought about this. They're like, what? And then in after you talk to them for a while, they're like, oh, yeah, like you are. It's like, oh, yeah, that makes a lot of sense, but.
Yeah, I think that's the hard part with the survey is them not understanding, like the behind, like the why behind it. They're just, you know, I want, like, they already have that relationship.
Oh, maybe more of a community discussion.
Maybe more of like a
We'll probably all go down on service. Town hall, community
Town hall session.
And then maybe a survey with the people that attended or something, but I don't know.
Susan, did you see already if the, like, just the teachers? Um, I know you said two teachers, but if the teachers in general responded positively to the idea?
She said, I think a hundred percent of the teachers responded, responded positively.
Yeah.
And two of the teachers have actually
I got that, yes.
So.
I got the pilot part, but okay, a hundred percent.
Which is
Which is huge.
Yeah, huge, yeah. I mean, they're the ones that are in it every day. Yeah, when you're certain and you're not looking forward to the other and, yeah, yeah.
No, I think I think that's great. And I do think that the awareness and understanding and especially having that um successful um run at it this year, being able to present that to parents is to, you know, that works really well. Um, we'd like to expand that out and here's all the reasons why.
And maybe, I don't know, the teachers that have done it can be available to answer questions or let them know how it's going and be part of that community conversation.
Yeah. Yeah, because I think we have um a few teachers, I think even Nick um has picked up a class midway through and run through. So I mean, not formally piloting the the looping, but teacher, we have more than even just those two teachers who have done some version of um of a smaller than a one through eight loop that can likely speak very well to that. Not to throw your name out there, Nick, but I'm looking at you and I know that you've done it, so, you know. All right.
Hey, I think this is the last thing on my list. We did have, there might be more, but um we did give the results back of our standardized tests and they've been made available to teachers, though we haven't really spent time um breaking them down and and reviewing the data. But overall, um both uh Kyron Combs and I have gone through the tests and see that overall we have continued to stay at the same level or improve. Um, having more students, for example, move from um below uh standard to at or above standard. So we're really doing pretty well overall.
Right.
With that, what I didn't realize, we did do these tests last year, but they weren't required. So therefore, since they weren't required, they're not showing up on the dashboard. So parents at the point can't see um or the community can't see what we, how we did overall. Um, so sort of trying to think about how I'm going to put that out there, but I do uh um will be asking Kyron, though he doesn't know that yet. Um, be careful what you put in the notes, uh, teachers. Um, to present uh that information to you next e- next month, as he has done every year.
Oh, great.
Uh, that's, I I feel like that's such exciting news considering the climate um of schools and community and just in this crazy time that we have um done as well or better in each of that, those areas. I think it's a huge testament to the quality of education that we offer here. Um, and I hope that for schools that did take it, that that data does eventually become available on the dashboard because I would love, um, either way, whether it's available or not, I would really like to see it presented to Chido Unifine. Yeah. As a, as a haha. Because I've heard them say enough about test scores, but I'd like to show them how well we've done.
And last year, we have an improvement from the year prior, right? So this is yeah, it's been a study year over year. I think it'll be, I mean, obviously, parents were a huge part of that the last year and a half. So that's, you know, just as a parent, it's nice to hear too that um in partnership. Yeah, yeah, we didn't ruin our children. I had one learning to read during COVID, which was fun. Um, so being able to partner with the teachers is huge and our students just not losing out. I mean, that's, that's just really attributes to the community that we have here. I mean, it's wonderful. It's really, I'm excited to hear about that.
We really rolled from campfire into
Yeah.
COVID too. So I think that's good advertising when we come to looking for TK children.
Yeah. P S, we survived better.
Yeah. Yeah. And we still tested because I know they, a lot of other um schools opted out and, you know, we didn't. And good, bad and ugly, we kind of just, we did it and we're just being transparent and we're doing better. So, haha. exactly.
Well, that's great. Thank you for that, Susan.
Alex, will you roll down all the way down to the bottom to make sure I didn't forget something I was gonna say? That's my report. Longer and more detailed, you know, more involved than usual, but thank you very much for your input. It will be helping me for next month.
Yeah, that was the most discussed item on the agenda, Susan. No, it's good. It's good stuff. And so thank you so much. And that brings us to item six. Our next meeting is Tuesday, February fifteenth at six P.M. I hope to see you all there. And item seven, adjournment. Have a wonderful evening.
All right. Thanks, guys. Good night.